While Doug's getting there, I did listen to the EMS conversation last week. I'm not certain if that was the EMS board that you were talking with or just the fire chiefs. But anything that we would be able to do with them is outside of our budget. You can't find 1.3 million dollars inside of our budget. It's just not there. So that, that, let's just put, let's put that conversation aside. I would like to have some input on that when I get back, but you know, just to let the, the district know that, you know, we can continue that conversation, but it's not going to come from within our budget. So that's not a part of conversation today. They've been turned down twice for that request. And I disagree with their decision to do a permanent override 100% so, um, but so they're greater conversation there. Somehow we have to be able to cure all of this. That needs to be, yeah, I can hear fine. It's just my being on here cuts out everybody else, I think. It's not that Neil, it's this, the systems override each other. Doug knew we need to wait and have Jeremy come fix that because we have to have, this is task be transcribable, correct? There has to be technology to allow us to do all of this. We have to integrate some way. Cause it doesn't make sense. I mean, one of us is going to need to be gone once in a while for health reasons. So Doug, why don't you take me off? I will watch on YouTube and then call me from the conference phone to my cellphone. That's the way it's been now for everyone, so. I'm leaving this, so just go ahead and call me on my cellphone from the conference.
Be off so we can get everything back on YouTube. You're still with us? Okay. No, you're good. You're good. All right, Commissioners 2. Where are we going next Doug?
So Commissioners, I, I just wanted to make it clear to, to show, do that based on what we have right now being presented. You do have the ability to approve the budget. After you hear from us today, there might be some things that you are choosing that not to fund. Uh, but again, I wanted to make it clear that this is, uh, the proposed budget with projected revenue, with projected cash forward, um, for fiscal year 2025. With that, I would like to turn it, any questions regarding the spreadsheet?
So we're still levying for we agree with all fairgrounds, indigent health, history, support, so we got all those levies in there.
The only question that we have though Commissioners is, is we still haven't heard from the fairground if we need to levy the
Full amount.
Full amount. Right now, we, we are fully aware that they at least have a minimum um, in our fund that we paid them in our remaining cash of $15,000. So I'm holding the, in our remaining cash that we show on our financials. After making our payment to them this fiscal year of 70, uh, 70,000, we still have 15,000. Excuse me, $10,914 in remaining cash. So the amount that we're, you're levying, proposing to levy for the fairgrounds is $59,086. So that's the cash forward and, uh, the
And the levy amount.
Then the levied amount, correct?
Okay, now I want to, hey, I'm Brian here because I got a little something note here last week that says the fairgrounds, they, they get to carry over cash if they don't use it all to put on the fair in next year's budget and you can't short them that of their levy for the following budget. Have you seen that?
Yeah, so the, uh, the fair board's budget needs to be based on the prior years, uh, the prior year's, uh, revenues from the fair. And, uh, that really should be submitted to the board for consideration in February. Uh, so they're, they're pretty tardy on getting that submitted to you. And then you base your levy rate on what their projected needs are for the upcoming, so you'd be forecasting into the future, uh, what their needs would be, but you're supposed to carry over the, the excess revenues and take that into consideration when you set the budget.
You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had the fair board treasurer here and she informed us that they had about 105,000. This is before the fair, so we haven't taken those expenses out. My point or my question is, we levy for the 70,000 every year. Whether they need it or not, we still have to do that. Is that how that works?
No, no.
We can cut them back.
Your, so the budget, the budget proposal that you are supposed to receive from the fair board in February is supposed to forecast what their needs are for the upcoming fair. So, and I don't know how much that is. If it's $150,000 and they carry over 100,000, then you should levy for $50,000. And that should be, that, that should be done every year.
We need to make sure that come February, you know, I think with this new treasurer, little gal sharp. And she knows she has to have that to us by February. She'll have it to us by February.
And I, and I do think, we can sit down and review the statute together with the fair board and the, and the commissioners to go over the time deadlines and what all the requirements are. And I, and I do think it's appropriate to have a, a little bit of a reserve fund for unexpected. Cause when you're forecasting, obviously you're just estimating, uh, so, so that, that's always appropriate. But these budget discussions need to happen way in advance of the fair because uh, you're supposed to take into account the, the revenues from the previous year. And then, and then levy accordingly to make sure you have enough funds to cover for the, the fair that just happened. And then we'll start that process again next February for, for the
Will you make that Brian? Uh, if we go ahead and levy that whole subsidy and the fair only needs to be plenty to make up the difference. We can use that extra money to improve the fairground, correct?
I, I don't know an immediate answer to that. I'd have to go back and review, review the memo I did a couple of years ago and, and reread that statute. I, I believe, again, but I want to clarify by doing the necessary research, but I believe that the the revenues that are received at the gates and that are collected by the fair board really are earmarked for the next year's fair and shouldn't be diverted to, uh, fairground improvements. That's a, that's a separate.
So, well, and that's the, I wish I'd have brought that code. I have it at home. I'll come in and show it to you this week, but the way it stated it is whether or not they have a surplus or not, we have to levy for the full 70,000 every year. They can build up a capital improvement fund, whatever you want to call it. But we're as county commissioners, make the final decision of what they want to build.
Yeah, I'm not confident that that's accurate because the, the county's obligation with the fair is to own the property. And, and so when we, when we own the property, we're responsible for the improvements. The fair board is responsible for putting on the fair. So they attract vendors, they put on the events and things like that, but the, the actual property, uh, the, the rodeo grounds, the buildings that are associated with it, that's the county's obligation. It's our obligation to own that, maintain it and to provide the funds for, uh, for future enhancement of that. And so that's why I want to go back and, and just double check that.
So what you're saying is that come February, they, they provide that budget. If they don't need the full 70,000 in next year's budget, we can cut that back then. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the levy, the, the, so the levy, the levy that we impose is to support the, the event of the fair.
Right.
And, and so that's where we have to work with the fair board in, in identifying the, the excess revenues from the prior year and taking that into account when you set the budget and forecast for, for future fairs.
Well, and I got this, this code from Allison. She was, she dug it up and found it honestly. And their feeling is if they have 100,000 left over after the fair, that they get to decide where to spend that on facilities of the fair. And I said, no, I don't think that's the case. It's got to be presented to the commissioners and we make the final decision.
Correct. Sounds, sounds like we need to
There's going to be some
Well, I think we need a workshop and we need to get everybody around the table so we can, we can look at the statutes at the same time and, and come to an understanding on, on how that's supposed to work, so.
She gave me, because it was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
The other thing to keep in mind is if you cut the, the fair levy down in half, it's not a big levy. But that allows you to raise levy somewhere else.
Yeah.
So it does have a kind of a small effect on the rest of the budget.
Yeah, and, and that's, and I think that's why legislature contemplated that these kind of budget discussions would happen really off cycle. This is the time that you're normally having budget sessions, uh, discussions, but for the fair, because the fair happens in the summer, uh, the, the timeframe for that to happen is in February. So, so everything can be prepared and done for in advance. But again, you're looking a year down the road in a way, so.
Okay, so continue on, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what I'd like to do is give the opportunity for the chief deputy to provide a presentation regarding the new positions that have been submitted to us for funding. And as well as we'll get into, allow Mike to provide some presentation regarding some salaries that were changed. And then lastly, we'll talk about some new additions that were made to the budget. Do you want to just?
Are they going to have Mr. also address what's happened with the position for city of craft days?
Yes.
That's all going, that's part of what we're going to talk about today. Yep.
Hey, Sherry, can you see this screen? The new positions on yours?
I can't. Just go ahead. I'll, I, I've got the spreadsheet I was sent earlier. If they have it, I'll tell it on there. Go ahead. I can hear it.
It should be, if you have the packet, Commissioner Mopin, it's the last tab that says new positions.
What I'm working off is an email that I received in our package, uh, of, on these pages.
Okay, I'll email you a new one.
I can't see anything. We have a bug on our camera screen back there. I'm being quite entertained by a fly.
An actual bug.
An actual bug in the room?
We're being bugged.
Yep.
Nice.
There's an actual bug in the room.
Yeah, we got fly slaughter. So, okay, let's start the janitor stuff. We know that we're going to do away with the contract to go in-house.
Yes, we hadn't provided you specific information yet. Um, so Scott Klingon said that he would
Gabby, can you please speak into the microphone?
Yeah, it's in front of me. Is that better?
Yeah, you're going to speak up maybe.
Okay, so Scott Klingon had requested janitors to avoid, or to deal away with the janitor contract that we have right now, so we bring them in-house. And Scott said that he would need two full-time janitors, one being a lead, so they'd be kind of, you know, slightly more in charge than the other janitor and then a part-time janitor. So we put it on here. Mike did the analysis and the lead came out to $19.11 per hour. Janitor $17.37 an hour, and then the part-time janitor would be the same hourly rate. So the spreadsheet tracks the annual cost, cost of insurance and benefits and gives you a total in red in column H for those three positions.
Okay, Gabby, I have a question. Do you remember what the contract was for now for janitor?
A hundred and, I'm not positive. We zeroed it out on our
This comes, those three positions total 132,000.
Yeah, we did the math and figured that it still saved us some money. Let me pull up the
My question is, what's, uh, off the contract, we're going to say, I thought it was like 157,000.
This should help.
My numbers aren't as good as they used to be.
So we had it in for 135,000.
Oh, that's, this is going to save us about $3,000. And we still
We
I thought it was more than that.
We left 10,000 in there because Scott said that he would need supplies and different things like that, I believe. So he, he did leave 10,000 in there, so we reduced the budget by 125,000. And then increased those three positions, so.
And then we're saving more than just
Uh, it's pretty close to a wash because that's, that's about 120,000, those three are together.
These are going to be county employees and they'll have Percy and all that stuff.
Correct.
And be more accountable.
That is correct.
Okay. And then the rest, I think, is all share stuff.
Nope, they're not all. Um, so planning and zoning tech, uh, the code compliance position, we have it listed for, if you read Mike's email, he had suggested that we take the planning and zoning tech and convert it into a code compliance officer. So that would get a bump in pay. And then hire for an office specialist. So that would, the office specialist is what would be the new position. And the code compliance would just be a raise of, you know, a couple of dollars per hour.
So Gabby, in your discussion with Cindy on that, is he, is she going to keep the existing code compliance and and up, you know, up shift him or is she going to go over the new position?
Sorry, Commissioner, she wants to, uh, her plan is to take the existing code compliance person and move him to the higher level and then backfill his position with a new office.
With a special, so he's going to stay in that job?
Yes, we're, we're going to, we're going to grow the job essentially, enhance it. Uh, and then he'll stay in it and then we'll backfill his because I got He'll be a new person to do more office work.
Right, and I think, I think that's appropriate if we end up taking back the impact area from the cities, then, then we're going to get those CUPs and some of these, that's going to come to us, so they're going to need that. And we'll be ready for it.
That's just one city and, well, that's the impact areas, the other two cities already governed by us.
Well, look at it this way, we're already doing all these impact areas.
Oh, yeah. We're doing cascades.
I did provide both of those ladies the number of, of permits and, you know, review and that type of thing that they are working on, doing the fall, so they have that information.
So they, is, uh, code compliance, you're just giving that person a raise? Office specialist can take his position? So, is that correct?
For the most part, yes. We'll be hiring an office specialist. Uh, right now, the person that we've got in there spends part-time in office, part-time out in the field. The idea is that ideally his job should be more almost exclusively out in the field doing code compliance, which that based on the nature of the work that he'll be doing in the field elevates his job up a little bit higher than where it is today. That's the raise, that's the increase of his position to a higher level. That's going to be basically then leaving all the office work, the in-office, uh, front, or customer service uh, work that he's currently doing in the office that needs to be done by somebody new, but that's going to be at a lower level job. So my, uh, my recommendation was then for that new position that we're going to have to hire, it would be at a slightly lower level than he is currently because it'll be mostly an in-office entry-level nature job.
That's going to start at 17 through 7. Now, I think usually when we talked about this around three or four weeks ago about a code compliance is maybe putting it under Kevin's vision, and I think right now, I think this is a good start. Let's stick it, let's send it right now. If we get into weeds, we get into other compliance issues, then I think we're going to have to have a serious discussion about let's move it over so that they get post-training, they know the paperwork, they have authority, more authority than this person will have. And, but that's going to be down the road. It's going to have to grow into that.
Yeah, we need to know what we're getting into.
Right. And I think, you know, it would be nice if we could do it now, but I think it's too fresh. Let's give it a year or two and then see about, which would adjust your budget and all that would change.
How we're going to have to plan it and figure out how we're going to hire these people and
And the big issue to me is going to be
Certified, it's going to go up from there.
They're going to have to be trained and what to do and what they can do and all that stuff.
That's the Aztec going to certification. I mean, there's a lot of code compliance people in Idaho that have their certification. He's going to be thoroughly trained on this, so.
Good, good. And as it gets more technical, like I said, it gets into the weed stuff or, you know, other things.
Some of Kevin guys, you know, we can have somebody go with them without having to pay somebody who's level, somebody at Western Post, because the second investigators post are going to become a sheriff.
You don't get them.
Okay, and then the background investigator, is that, that's out of yours, right? And we approved that a long time ago.
Yes, uh, and quite frankly, we're, we're coming up on full staff on patrol. Um, and attention, we're doing pretty well. I think we got three to go. About three to go, so. If, if they stay full staff, that, that's not gonna be needed that much, but where we were before, before we had him, was we're having detectives do it, and then all of a sudden, our criminal cases are playing idle while the guy's doing a background investigation, where this guy, he's got all the law enforcement background, he's got all that, but he, he's just doing part-time background investigations that are, I get a pretty thorough report on everybody, we're ready to hire him, which, quite frankly, I mean, I know that looks like a lot of money, but at the end of the day, negligence hiring becomes very expensive. If you miss something on a background investigation, you're responsible for that.
My question to you, Kevin, is okay, five years from now, we have euphoria, everything is full, and we're not doing background investigations. Can you be able to take this guy and put him in a patrol or anywhere?
Well, use him, he's just part-time, that's all he's doing is background, he's not doing anything in the law enforcement capacity.
That's what he does background.
That's, that's all it is, background, and you know, and that's, that's the other thing, say, say you do get something where, you know, P and Z or something needs an investigator of some sort, look down the line five, six years, and, and the prosecutor, like, a lot of prosecutors' offices has a, has an investigator as well, you know, then all of a sudden, we can share that resource, of course, we'd ask them to pay for the wages of that part. He's, uh, he's very thorough, let's just put it that way.
Mike, how much did we budget, how many hours is this guy gonna work?
Pardon me?
He's not full-time.
He wasn't budgeted for, which is why he's on here, 'cause we need to dot our i's and cross our t's and put it on here to get approval.
Okay, and he started out at thirty-two, twenty-four?
We overshot with the twenty thousand. He's, he's getting nowhere close to that. We just threw a number up.
That's sixty-seven thousand a year, he's full-time.
Yeah, he works maybe ten hours a week or a month at most.
Only if we have a background.
My question is this, we so far turned down a couple of positions within the county, and we told them they had no money to do. So my concern is, is this is coming in today, I've heard about this prior to this. I've already been telling divisions, that we have no money, how are you gonna make it work for you? Why, why now, what's the change? How are we doing it currently? Because I have other departments that wanted employees, but we are turning down.
We've been using that individual?
Yes, we have. We brought it to you, and you guys approved that person, but we didn't make a line item for it, so we've just been paying them out of control.
Well, I see. At thirty-two dollars an hour, and you're saying that's a little too high, I understand that. That's only sixty-four hours, if you're only doing twenty grand. Am I missing something here? Why is his annual salary only twenty-one if he's a full-time?
He's not a full-time, he's a as-needed occasionally, a few hours a month.
So what's he gonna do the rest of the time?
Nothing, he's, there's no, he's not set to sit, work nineteen hours a week, he's set as-needed.
Well, yes, we still need the hourly.
Commissioner, that's six hundred and twenty hours.
How did you figure that?
Twenty thousand divided by thirty-two, twenty-four, that's six hundred and twenty-four.
I got sixty-four point five. I did it wrong. Did you graduate from Columbia?
No, I graduated from Cascade. Oh, I took, I took two oh eight, I would divide it by the hourly rate. Six hundred and twenty hours.
Which again, is probably three times the amount that he's gonna work, at least.
He'll never work that many.
So that's fifteen weeks, sixteen hours, it's full-time.
Fifty-one hours a month.
And I think this is a reasonable ask, I'm really, I know we talked about it here, I don't remember how far back, doing this, because our detectives were always trying to do the background, and they couldn't do their actual investigation work. And we're committing twenty-one thousand seven thirty to it. Again, this allows us to float into that job and to investigate, maybe, you know, a part-time or full-time or whatever.
It's good for this year.
No insurance, no medical.
No, we didn't, not marked enough hours for that.
So that added, just right at two-
Again, it's more important than building tech. We're, we're turning away the building department with building tech. Larry, we're not putting anything in there for parts and racks, which is an income producing. And we're doing away with the City of Cascade this way, so I'm just, I'm being the tough guy on this one. 'Cause we're already underfunded in Sheriff's Department. Is this what is needed right now?
And that, that's completely your decision, Commissioner, all I'm saying is that we did come, we got permission to get this person, and I can tell you that when we're on a major crime, I'm doing crimes before backgrounds, and we have lost a lot of applicants before we had him because it was taking too long to get a background, by the time our detectives get it finished, because crime's number one, backgrounds are number two. And by the time you get them ready to make an offer, they took a job somewhere else, so. It's, it's not an easy decision, and I understand that, and I respect either one you make.
Sherry, who, what was the other one besides the building tech that we, that we turned down? What was the other one you said?
Well, Annette had asked, you know, with the expansion of the impact area, she's concerned that she's gonna have enough people. Larry and Kurt some racks, we put him on hold, and so we make sure that he gets those contracts for those, uh, uh, sand grounds. But that's gonna be something we're gonna have to address first in the year, and it's not in the budget right now. I also see part-time deputies up here, so. I'm just saying, you know, we better prioritize at some moment in time with all the divisions, so they feel like they're being heard.
Well, I look at this with the sheriff, the part-time and the background, we're looking at seventy-six thousand dollars versus someone that's gonna go out to the rec department and help clean bathrooms and that kind of stuff, part-time next summer. I, I feel like we could, if it gets that bad for rec, we could come up with those funds out of another budget to cover that, if it gets that bad.
And I agree with that, 'cause Larry will hopefully be so paid that we'll be able to purchase fees for that. Annette is, you know, Annette is asking, and I just, I told her, there's no money to do this. So I don't know who else asked this year, and how that doesn't grab you, if anyone else has talked about it, but.
I, I thought, the last time we talked to Annette, she, she was able to keep up, and she was okay. Maybe I misinterpreted that.
I just wanted to start closing early, if she was able to get caught up with a new guy. And basically what I said, get the new guy trained, take on, you know, he'll work in the impact area, and that's what we choose to do, and then we'll have that conversation. I just wanna put it out there that this is the first time I heard about this. But we are ready to tell people, you need to wait. Martin needs somebody, and we told Percy, I have to go here without any additional help. To see what her training is, so. I'm just putting it out there for you guys to consider, but.
Just another piece of the equation, if I may, on, uh, with part-time deputies as well, understand that Detective Sigorski requested to go down to thirty hours a week, and so that's, he's gonna go down to thirty. Ron Santucci that we brought on is almost twenty-five years' aid of county experience, so he's retired, so he's got to do the work five months, take one month off, work five months, take one month off. So understand that for one month plus ten hours a week, on, on Steve, we're not paying that anymore. On, on Ron, Ron Santucci, uh, there's two months, two months a year in a full-time spot that we're not paying him. So take that into advisement as well on your budgeting.
If you take off all the janitor stuff, you're only looking at a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The janitor stuff we know is a wash, it's the contract. So really, all, the only new position we're creating is, it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand. I think that's pretty awesome.
That's two to three other positions, so that's not a small amount of money.
Well, and two of those are just, you know, the background investigators, the only part-time, the P and Z code compliance is just a bump in salary, and. What do you wanna do, Neil?
Everybody needs it, I understand that the sheriff needs it also, I mean, everybody needs it, we just, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that we're, we're listening to all the divisions, all departments, the board and then the county. And that's a big huge moneymaker, uh, you know, she contributes a lot to our underlying budget. And we don't wanna stress other departments.
Well, and you gotta remember too, that the jail's a moneymaker as well, and we're using a lot of those funds for, in the Sheriff's Department.
Again, remember, there's two months, there's two months that's not being paid on, on a fairly high, high-wage earner. There's also for our detective, which, which he's a gem, and we're gonna hang on to him as long as we can, and he's a workhorse. So he's ten hours a week less pay on him. So it's not like we're not making a few gouges here and there too. We're trying to keep the experience going, we've talked about this a long time, and now I've got Eddie Donick, who retired and came back, Todd Gersen, the retired, came back, and we always say, we don't want all this, uh, we don't want all this talent to leave, but yet we, and the last thing I wanna do is say, hey, thanks for floating us while we really needed you, but now, see you later, we don't need you anymore, because we're full-staffed, and then all of a sudden, something happens, and people go to perpetual or something, and I'm asking those guys to come back and bail us out again, and I think I'd hear a see you later, you know, so. So I'm, I'm trying to look at the long game here too as well.
I think I'm, I'm-
You're good with this?
Good with what we got, and we will deal with other issues as they come up. 'Cause I know we're fixing to get stretched, I mean, look how many people are coming into this valley, we're gonna get stretched. And we're gonna have to deal with it.
Yeah, somehow. You guys, a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, that's not that big of a hit as far as new positions. I think that's pretty light.
Well, you're, you're saying that, but I'm looking at, we have a three-sessending, three every year, plus new construction. This year got dedicated to four hundred and fifty thousand. And so we do need to be cognizant of, where we keep those departments farther into our pilt line. That's what we need to be aware of. We're using pilt every single time we over-approve the budget. This year, we're having to cut into pilt another hundred thousand dollars, so it's not a small amount of money that we're talking about.
No, and I don't mean to sound facetious, Sherry, but what is your concern about using pilt? Payment in lieu of taxes, it's just federal, basically federal property taxes is the way I look at it. I know it's going down every year, it's not fair, but it's just another revenue source.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have-
I agree with that, Els, but, you know, that's always been the county's only emergency fund. We've used two million of that in the last two years. So it's now, we are to the point where we, we have very little emergency funding left in Valley County.
We have the general fund reserve, we've always had a general fund reserve of three hundred and fifty thousand.
We use it every year. We're using that general fund reserve to backfill this budget right now.
That is our pilt.
Payment that we get is approximately eight hundred, roughly eight hundred thousand. Um, we, the commissioners have been, a portion of that comes directly into the general fund as revenue, and then the other portion is going into the pilt fund to save for future capital equipment and other needs, but what has, what was, what it was utilized for previously was payment to the EMS district, or to the fire departments. So that was, it drastically reduced our pilt fund that we have.
That's a one-time payment from the government.
That's correct.
Every year.
An annual payment, yes.
Yeah, annual payment.
And I have no problem using it, I'm just bringing this up, this is the time that we've set budgets, and our concern is to move forward. Every year, we cut further and further into that payment, and that's the only way to see, uh, any kind of funding in government, if you like, to have a dedicated fund. And we have been using that as our capital equipment fund. That's how we've done all the work that Franklin has done. That's how we've done part of Jeff, I don't know, Jeff came out of his own. Everything that we've done with the EID program, those extras that we've been able to do, all came out of those. I'm just saying, the more we get into it, and we oblige it as a budgetary line item every year, the less we have available for one-time projects that are critical to the county.
I don't know, I guess it just depends on how you look at it. To me, it's just another revenue source that we can use to buy the things that we feel like we need. You know, you can save and save and save and, and blow it all at once, or you can do like we've been doing, and buy the, the things that our departments have requested, the things that we want, and I think it's great. It's just, means always-
But we have a murder trial going on on our count too. I mean, that's your line of conversation for five years, but hopefully, our murder fund, our, you know, the Stidnight Road came out of that. We, we just, you gotta have some kind of emergency funding too. So all I'm saying is for each division, but we need to make sure that these are needed positions that we are approving.
It's cheaper.
Not that we have a ton of money left over, we already have to deal with the compensation of the EMS district.
So when we got the money back for the Stidnight Road, did I go back in pilt, or where did I get that?
Into the road department.
We're in the road department. I probably should've come back into pilt.
It was, the expenses were not paid out of pilt, that was all paid out of the road department for this.
For that, Stidnight Road?
Correct.
Okay, I thought we used pilt on that.
It was not used to expend that expense.
I bet he scared that.
If, if it was, it would've, yes, I would agree that that revenue would come back, go back into the pilt line, but no, that expenditure came out of the road department fund, and those funds were-
So we're okay there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where do we wanna go next?
Moving on.
Probably have a discussion about Cascade contract.
That was for two forty-eight?
That's two forty-nine last year.
Now they wanna go to zero.
Yes, Commissioners, as you're aware, the City of Cascade provided the sheriff with notice, they will not be renewing that contract.
No, what do you wanna do, Kevin, it's your department?
Like, I let them know, we're still ready and able to do it if they change their mind. However, the problem here lies, is they had a full-time police department working under them. They decided to dissolve that and go from a five-hundred-thousand-dollar budget down to about half. And now they're letting that go. You guys have to understand that Cascade was always either through contract or through their own PD servicing this town, and this isn't a normal thousand-town, thousand-person town. There's a lake right here, and it's a main artery right through, this town blows up, and you guys know that. And so we always were able to count on Cascade PD as backup, and we backed them up, it was a two-way street. But at the end of the day, they had coverage here, and now all of a sudden, they're pulling out of the contract, but that doesn't mean we don't have to respond to radio calls, that doesn't mean that we don't respond to emergencies. The work is still here, and somehow, we have to have the employees to do it. Because we've already lost the, the three and a half positions they had that were backup for us. The amount of times that I had Chief Freeman come help me when I was on the road down in Smiths Ferry and everything else, I mean, we leaned on each other a lot, and then with the contract, we continued to lean on each other. And just because the contract goes away does not mean the work does. And, uh, at, at the end of July, we're already at over ten thousand five hundred calls for service this year. End of twenty-three total was fourteen thousand. We're gonna blow that away.
To the City of Cascade.
No, that's just, that's full on everything, and we're getting busier and busier and busier. And, you know, um, I'll be honest with you, like, last Sat, just this weekend, on Saturday night, I stayed out till three o'clock in the morning to help the guys, because I'm on salary and it doesn't cost anymore. Dave Stanbaugh's out till three o'clock in the morning, I don't know how many times a month, because him and I are both saying, well, we're salaried, it doesn't cost anymore, so we're trying to save in that direction, 'cause our, our overtime's blown. The things don't quit happening up here, the things of people missing, the domestics, the major crimes that were, it's not like it was when I first got here, the major crimes we're doing that take so much investigation, and I'll be honest with you, we're not cowboy-ing it anymore, I'm not letting one guy go to a domestic anymore. If we have to call somebody out for officer safety, I'm doing it, because I'm not letting guys go into that by themselves anymore. The, the rules of this game have changed. And so I, I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how we- And so I, I don't know. I don't know how you, I don't know how we cut deputies because the work is still there. Just because they decide they're not going to fill a contract does not mean that work goes away. Somebody has to do it.
So we're creating three new positions without funding.
I'd say, yeah, I, I guess, I guess it was three. I'm not sure how that works when there's 10 hours of, 10 hours of contract service. But I can tell you, the workload's going up, not down.
It's going to, is what Ryan said. I've heard something more cases, just, just up to now. That's ridiculous.
And I know you have ISP, ISP as well as McCall filtering some of that in. But I would argue that why insurance felonies are coming through our office, um, we're busy. And then now you have backcountry guys back there digging stuff up. And it's just, uh, you know, but this little town is busy.
So Gabby, how do I look at this? Basically, we've got three positions we're going to lose funding for. Is that the way to look at this?
I can't tell you how to look at it. We're losing 240,000 revenue.
So have you guys talked about where are we going to get that?
Well, Doug already told you he couldn't, you know, the budget, the budget is already set. We removed that revenue. So when he said that he could fund it all, that doesn't change. That's with these three positions still in there and the revenue removed.
Where we, we are getting, uh, help is truly from, uh, the prisoner board, the state inmates. Uh, we are generating approximately 300,000 more than what was projected. Uh, we projected 400,000 in revenue. And for next fiscal year, uh, we are going to be projecting higher than that 400,000.
Simply because they're getting inundated as much as we are. And they're getting more people.
State's housing more, uh, more inmates with Valley County based on overcapacity. And then truly Ada County and Canyon County aren't wanting to house those inmates any longer. So the Lieutenant LaCroix is making contact with Ada County and Canyon County. My understanding, I apologize for speaking out of turn, um, on a regular basis saying, hey, what inmates do you, can you send us?
I spoke with Lieutenant LaCroix, as you seen if he was in the room, but I spoke to him today. And, uh, and he is in constant, uh, communication with Ada Canyon, to lesser degree Twin Falls. Have a different clientele in their jail that's sometimes a little hard to deal with. But we are in constant contact saying, hey, if you need, need, you need. And of course that ebb and flows. But now you're going to see a bunch of sentencing come through from stuff in the summer. And then there's going to be overcrowded. We're, we're just bring them up here. We have, as long as we have beds, we're going to-
And I think that's awesome. I, I'm really excited you're going to keep those deputies on staffing. Let's absorb that hit. Politics of Cascade is going to catch up with politicians in Cascade immensely. That was a mistake. They're going to have to learn.
I, I wouldn't want to have to explain how I went from a full-service police department to a contract police department and no law enforcement at all. I would not want to have to explain that.
And all they're doing is saying, well, by legal statute, you guys have to cover the town. Another game they're playing.
And we will, I'm, I'm not saying we're not going to provide law enforcement to them. It's just that we're not contracted to be in the city anymore. So it may be we're in Smiths Ferry. And yeah, as bad as it sounds, Yellow Pine or Big Creek, because all those guys have just as much of their law enforcement service as Cascade City does without a contract. And so I'm not trying to hold anybody hostage. I'm just saying that now guys are going to be moving around and they're not going to be stationed here running traffic and everything else. And that way they can be that quick to calls for service. I, I, the rest of the county's going to get served as they should.
And I would guess people start flying to, through town at 45. Folks are going to get upset. They're coming into town pretty fast now. They're running out of time. Where are we going to go next?
Which was, that's everything that we have to present to you today. Um, of course, we're going to have a formal public hearing on the 26th. We want to be ready to publish in the paper on the 19th. So we are at the final hour. So if there are any proposed changes, we need to know, know later. Realistically by Wednesday or Thursday would be ideal.
So we actually, we're going to go over the things that had changed over the last-
My apologies. There are a few other matters that need to be discussed.
So we just, a few things that changed since we talked last. The sheriff's office, I'll turn it over to Kevin and let him tell you about it. But they did have a line item requested in their budget, which is 0104. 50,000 for canine expenses. I'll let Kevin tell you about that.
Yes. As you guys know, and I think you, everybody was at the commissioners and the sheriff's, uh, forums earlier this spring. And the question keeps coming up is if fentanyl and everything's such a problem, why don't we have a dog? I think it's, I think it's time to bring a law enforcement dog in. I think we've shot fairly high on this. We're probably going to come in under that. But, um, I'm looking at getting a, a drug canine. And I, I think that, that it's important, all the traffic on this road, the amount of drope that's coming through. And I think that, I think we owe it to the citizens to make sure we have the tools that can try to keep some of these drugs out of our community. We've had the, we've had the overdoses you've heard about. Um, fentanyl, it's, it's really big in the valley. And as we know, when it comes to the valley, it's going to come up here. All these Airbnbs, we've gotten some pretty significant drugs out of them. And I think if word gets out, there is no dog on the Highway 55 corridor.
So what does this 50 grand get you? Buy you a dog?
Dog, the training, um, which, right now, we do have a guy and we're waiting to see how this goes with the Cascade contract, whether we keep those guys or not. But we do have a guy that is actually a certified dog trainer that wants to come work for us. And so we wouldn't have to, that would save quite a bit on the training and the per diem to go get them trained and have the dog imprinted with the handler. Um, so I think we tried to whittle it down as much as we can. I think we can go even less than this, but to be safe, to get a program up off the ground for 50,000 with a, with a certified canine and a certified handler behind it. Um, just the word getting out on the 55 corridor, having a, having a drug canine, I think is going to help immensely.
So Gabby, where did you put it? Under Sheriff?
100 dash four, seven, 14, right there. Canine expenses at the bottom.
All I have to do is read.
Canine expenses right there.
Sherry, what's your pleasure on this one?
Sorry.
Okay, that's it.
I haven't called Sherry before.
Hey, Sherry.
I, I don't, you know.
Thank you, Sherry. You can go to bed now.
I'm doing things right now where I have some serious constraints. Sheriff's Department needs to know that something he needs and is requesting.
Metopilone wouldn't pay for some.
You know, so what, what have other sheriff's departments that have this service available? What's proven upon? Is there liability without any dog on it?
Um, I'll be honest with you. If you have a, a dual-purpose dog, by dog and a drug dog, yes. Um, and then I made it pretty clear that I want a floppier dog, like a retriever or something that's not, uh, by nature aggressive, to cut down on that. Um, I've talked to the prosecutor. He's definitely in favor, obviously. Um, and so other agencies, yeah, I mean, there's always, there's always liability on everything. But I think if you whittle that down with the correct dog, the correct training, um, the right temperament of both the dog and the trainer, uh, imprint them together, take the time on the front end, make sure you're successful on the back end, I think is, is, uh, is a big deal. But, um, I've been hearing loud and clear from our citizens that they expect something more. And I've heard, I don't know how many times, why doesn't Valley County have a dog? You have Highway 55 going right through your county. Why do you not have a dog? And quite frankly, I don't have a good answer for it.
So the 50 grand that pays part of the trainer's salary too?
For the dog. Well, no, he'd be on staff and actually a deputy too.
So this is actually going to be, so this is just for the dog and the training?
Dog and training. And like I said, when we came up with this number, we were thinking we were going to have to send, this guy just happened to apply. He's got 25 years' experience as well. And, uh, he's been in the dog training. He's certified. He's a cert, certified trainer, all nine yards. Um, so we thought, we were thinking we were going to have to either send him out of state for that 10 weeks to get imprinted, trained and, and signed off. And we may be able to do that in-house and have them work in the road and then dedicate it two to three hours a day of going out and training. And so we're not sending guys out on per diem and motels and all that stuff. So, um, if we do get him, it's going to be considerably less money.
So what, what do your opinions more important? Pay for your employees or adding this type of a program to the department?
Can you say that again, Sherry?
She said, what's more important, paying for employees or adding this project to the department? To you?
Um, well, obviously, we need to have the employees. Um, but our community wishes are also very important to me. And when I heard it, uh, knocking on doors and everything, no less than 100 times of why don't you have a dog? I'm going to start paying attention to that. And I know Commissioners heard it too. And so I, I think we have to be responsive to our, to our citizens and say, well, if, if we've truly got this epidemic that we're reading about in the papers and everything else, then what are we going to do to combat it? And to me, $50,000, is it a lot of money? Yeah, it is. But, uh, I, I believe there's a potential for a great ROI on that as far as, uh, prosecutions and getting drugs off the street. So-
That's the goal. Um, I think with what you explained, I, I'm having a heartburn over $50,000. What's the smallest number you'd take?
I'd have to look at it, but I... I think somewhere between 35 and 40 to be safe without, I'd have to know if we're going to be getting this other, if, all the difference in the world is if we're getting this deputy that can train in-house or if we're sending this dog out or this person out and buying the dog.
How? When do you know you're getting this deputy? Just that it knows how to do it.
I'm waiting to find out if we're going to be able to keep the Cascade deputies because that's my opening. I haven't hired the Cascade because I'm not going to hire somebody and then rip them because we don't have the money for them. So that, that's, I guess, until that question is answered, I don't have an answer for what's the low.
Well, I'd be willing to go in on this for 40 grand. I think that's a fair start.
If we had him, I think we can make that work.
I, I think this looks in ways, that's my opinion. Because when he's up there, then that's great.
Commissioners, there's one more matter that I failed to bring to your attention. Um, there has been a, a request or the, not necessarily a request, but there was, there was some software that was presented to the Commissioners for civil software for the sheriff's office as well as the building department isn't satisfied with the software that they've received, as the Commissioners have heard. Um, in speaking with Jeremy and speaking with, I believe, the sheriff's office, he is proposing to put that civil software on hold and just budget for the building department for their software. But that's an additional 100,000. So there's $200,000 budgeted in the IT department's budget for software specifically for the building department upgrade that is apparently necessary.
Well, that's already in this budget. We've already done-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've added that. It was 120,000, uh, but we've increased it to 220,000.
Is that partly because of the gold dust shop and, and all that's going to go on over there?
I would-
No, it's not. The, the current software that we purchased through Tyler is not functioning like it needs to. And there's been another program identified that will actually help them be a fully-sufficiented department. It will actually be formed a development services department to include fighting the zoning. So they've been trying the other software for the last year. It still is not working according to the way that it should be. It may not cost that much. I'm really working with Tyler to try and get them to compromise what we stated is the original contract. But that hasn't been, it wasn't like that.
So Doug, are you talking about the 220 that's off Computer Arts?
Yes, sir. It's contracts out there.
I thought Computer Arts was going away.
Not all of the products is going away. Now we're going to have to fund, uh, civil is going to come out of this line as well as-
But it's not Computer Arts that-
It's not, but that's the fun, that's the-
Civil.
Civil is, yes. The civil program that the sheriff's office has is Computer Arts. Well, what we did was just added, since it says contracts, other slash CIA, we're going to be utilizing that expense line for the software.
That's a good, so Computer Arts for the sheriff is going to stick around. It's not going away.
My understanding is, is Jeremy still trying to get communication to determine if it is going to be supported or not. I don't know if we know for a fact if it is or isn't unless Commissioner Mopin knows something different.
Yes, my argument is I wouldn't want to invest the software in a company that's going to go away in two or three years.
So the, this is Tyler's software that the building department is discussing it.
Okay.
So that, it, it actually blends with all the other positions of software. And I talked with Kevin about it and he talked to his people and they were agreed that here's weight on the upgrade of the sheriff's department would be acceptable. So we are going to have to upgrade that Computer Arts program over to service, but we wait here and be planted right in the next budget cycle.
Sherry, when you talked to Tyler and asked for maybe some, some money back, did they happen to state an amount or did they even talk to you about it?
They thought Jeremy's play right now. I gave them all the contact information that I met at our last meeting down in Quinn Falls or in Idaho Falls.
Okay.
And I talked to them down there. The guy said, yeah, we need to have to deal with that. Uh, that was some of their high-level people. So I, I think we just continue to hand on them to give us the credit, but it's not as expensive as it was going to be.
Well, I would much rather go that route than to give Computer Arts anymore.
Now, Computer Arts is going away. We just need to get rid of them in all of our systems. But we still have a couple things to handle there.
And you've already figured this into the budget, correct? Okay. So we're out of time, you guys. What else do we need to talk about?
So did, uh, if I, I just, I wasn't there last week. Did you go over all of the ranges and all the pay that you're actually working on for this budget? And that they're-
Probably going to need a mic.
What we're doing?
Yeah, we did that.
Mike needs a mic.
Yeah, you want a mic.
Yeah, Commissioners, so, uh, I've come up with a pay raise recommendation. Uh, this plan that I've come up with this year is attempting to do three different things, at least three different things, some of, most of which, uh, you directed me to take a look at. The first one, of course, is simply giving pay raises to all of our staff. We've got to give something to some, you know, to all of our folks. Um, this plan comes up with a, uh, or this recommendation comes up with a plan for that. The other thing that it looks at is trying to increase the starting wages of our lowest-paid positions within the county to make sure that we maintain competitiveness, uh, in hiring qualified staff. Um, to do as much as we can there without breaking the bank and without compressing the wages of all the existing staff that we have here. The third thing that this plan attempts to do, or this recommendation attempts to do, is to take the 70 or so different starting salaries. Basically, we've got over 100 different job titles with over 70 different pay scales for those positions. That creates a lot of opportunity for inequity and unfairness and tries to create established pay grades with fixed amounts and then placing every one of those job titles in one of those fixed pay grades. The numbers that I came up with for the pay raises for our existing staff was to, uh, basically give everyone either a 4% pay raise or a dollar 20 an hour pay raise, whichever is greater. What that comes to is anybody making $30 an hour or less to- What that comes to is anybody making $30 an hour or less today would get a $1.20 an hour pay increase as a minimum. That allows us to move everybody uphill by the same amount, thereby not compressing our wages. But it allows us to move those bottom-paid employees of ours up as much as possible. It's also important to try to put as much money down at that end of the pay scale as possible because we know we have benefits that are going to be increasing in costs, specifically health insurance. And that's not based on a percentage of one's wage. That's a fixed dollar amount. So when we have to increase health insurance costs, that tends to impact our lowest paid people the most. And so this plan tries to at least address that as much as possible. Everybody making above $30 an hour would get a fixed 4% increase. Other increases that you'll see, when I said I am trying to create fixed pay grades and then lump every one of our job titles into one of those pay grades, there were a handful of additional increases for some people that had to happen as a result of that, because we did have some positions within the county that historically were just, quite honestly, paid too low relative to their peers in other departments. And so this plan attempts to try to fix those inequities. And although there were a number of them, most of the increases that came out of that mandatory increases to bring people up to a new minimum pay amount did have to take place. There were a number of them, but they were relatively minor. And then finally, I tried to take a look at other positions within the county that we know for either historical reasons, individuals were missed, people that just needed additional adjustments to bring them again into equity with their peers or positions that we consider high risk for turnover. An example of that, I'm going to go ahead and name positions. I won't name names, but I'll name positions. We've got mechanics working for us right now in the road department. We know how much fun those are trying to fill and we know what they cost to try to fill those. We need to take care of the existing mechanics that we have working for us or we are increasing the risk that we'll lose the ones that we have to say nothing of try to replace the one position that we have open. So anyway, this plan that I came up with, this recommendation that I come up with, tries to address all of those factors and to try to create, try to again, get as much money into the hands of our people as we can possibly afford and to try to make us as competitive as we possibly can be for the future for trying to hire new staff down the road and hopefully start minimizing the turnover that we have. Sheriff Capery said it perfectly. We get a brain drain. We start losing talent. There's a cost to that that's far greater than simply bringing somebody else on board. Recruitment costs are expensive. Having positions go vacant for weeks or months is expensive, but there's a greater cost in the brain drain that comes with it and it's unnecessary in my opinion around here.
Well, and I like what you've done with the bottom salary. I still see some that are below 20, but.
We're taking a bite of it, a pretty good bite.
Can you roll that up so we can look at the rest of them, please? Can you roll it again? And again? Well, that is the hard time. Okay, Mike, the other, all the other question I had is like, I know we're taking on a new grant writer starting next month. He's got some experience. He's not going to start at the base.
No, sir. We are paying him a premium wage based on that experience.
And is he already in the budget?
He is, yes.
And is there anything in the salary schedule that builds in amount of years somebody is served?
Yes. Yes, sir. That was some of those individual adjustments that I took a look at, was trying to see if we've got, say, three or four people who've been working here for, you know, a period of time, they're all in the same job, but one of them, or we have somebody that's been here 15, 20 years and they're not making 20 bucks an hour. You know, to me, that's an inequity that's got to be adjusted. So I did try to take a look at the job that an individual is in. I mean, length of service is a factor you definitely want to look at, but it's not the only factor. You also have to look at the level of the job.
And then there's a cap, high and low.
Yes.
And you reach the cap, you're kind of stuck there.
Yes, and in looking at this, the plan that I've come up with, fortunately, nobody that we'll have in the county is going to be near a cap anytime within the next few years if we don't move the salary structure at all. Hopefully, we'll move everybody's pay up every year, but nobody is going to be in any kind of jeopardy of reaching their pay cap anytime soon.
Hey, any more questions, comments? Sherry, are you good with this?
Uh, yep, I've got it. Do you have one? But that's going to be a second question.
I'm good, so we're good. So let's go forward and get her published and get her done. That work? Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sir, excuse me, are you here for the Cron Lane?
Yep.
Oh, good. Sorry if we run a little late, but.
Oh, I, I just appreciate that you guys are willing to wade through that pile of stuff. Holy cow.
Okay, well, that's our next agenda item. As soon as these guys clear out, we'll move on to it. Cindy, you sent this to us, right?
I did. There've been a few changes to it. He's looking at the details. He changed the ownership from.
Idaho Properties.
Idaho Properties LLC, a Colorado company, to McCall Storage LLC. So I changed that in the resolution that I will have you sign. And he also brought a new deed.
And this is for a 50-foot right-of-way, correct?
This is, no, this is for 20 feet adjacent to a prescriptive 50-foot right-of-way.
Oh, so now we got our 70.
So, well, you have 45 feet from center is what you're going to have. I know. It's very strange. He's, he does not own the prescriptive right-of-way. I'm not sure exactly where his ownership starts in that prescriptive right-of-way, but he is deeding to the county 20 feet, which will accommodate a pathway in the future along Cron Lane.
Oh, okay, I got it.
He says he does not own Cron Lane, but so he's deeding us 20 feet.
I've got the, I've got the survey if you want to see what the surveyor says.
I sent him the survey.
I think we got to hear him on the computer. Hey?
And so this is Resolution 2024-18, Cron Lane Right-of-Way in its Acceptance of a Deeded Public Right-of-Way based upon the recommendations by the Valley County Road Superintendent and the City of McCall Planner.
Okay, so everybody's good with this? If you are, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2024-18. I'm going to make a motion that we approve Resolution 20, 2024? 2024-18.
Dash 18 for Cron Lane.
A second.
Seconded. Got a motion, second to approve Resolution 2024-18, Cron Lane Right-of-Way, Acceptance of Deeded Public Right-of-Way. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All motion carries.
That's the corrected one and this is the corrected one.
Just giving all your land away, Vince. You're just giving all your land away.
Well, you better pay me 15,000 for it.
Thanks, Vince.
Well, no, thank you. Hopefully I could get a big building permit here shortly, so that'd be good.
Oh, that's a German.
Oh, my gosh. You don't have, you don't know the half of it.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, maybe you do.
Yeah, we do. Unfortunately. I don't know how you deal with it. It drives me crazy.
I think I'm close. That's good.
This job will make you crazy. Think you're going to go ahead and break around as soon as you get her permitted?
You're going to break around as soon as you get her permitted?
I got, I've got people chomping at the bit to get going. I just got to get, you know, just that last little bit of.
I know. I know.
It's, I don't think this is really part of it, but it's done now, so that's.
I've had it since February.
March 5th, I think.
Because I started sending emails in February wondering what to do with it. But then I decided we would bring it to you.
The thing about it is, is we're, we're all in agreement and we're going to, you know, things are going to change and we're going to work, abide by whatever the county says. And, you know, we're not fighting battles. We're just going to get it done and do it the way you guys want to have it done.
There you go. That's the best one.
Works.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, sir. Have a great day. Hey, we have no general public out in the audience presented to the Commissioners. So at this time, I'm going to make the motion that we go into an executive session for Idaho Code 742061B. This is for evaluation, dismissal, or disciplining. I have a second. Second. Got a motion and a second. My roll call, please.
Thompson, aye.
Mopin, aye.
Hasbrook, aye. And Doug, I'm going to need like three minutes, so let's make it at 3:55 when we go in.